Welcome. This is the January 16th, 2023 work session for the Salisbury City Council. Upon the adjournment of this meeting at approximately 5:25, council will convene in a special meeting. In the event of an emergency, we ask everyone to remain calm and exit the double doors located to the left of, of, the left of me and at the front quarter of this building. If the doors are blocked, please exit through the doors to my right by pulling the fire alarm to the right of the door under the monitor. Please let us know if you need any assistance. At this time, we do ask that everyone please silence your cell phones. Public comments will be, on any of the topics presented this evening will be heard after each item. Please be sure to complete a form at the entrance of the, of the building and give it to the city clerk. You will be called and ordered a receipt and you will have three minutes for your public comment. At this time, we'll hear from about a budget amendment for providing an EMS crew and gator to the 2023 Bay Bridge Walk by our fire chief, Rob Frampton. Chief Frampton, afternoon.
Good afternoon, everybody. This one should be pretty simple. Back on November 12th, the fire department supplied two BLS providers and a gator for the Bay Bridge Walk. We've done that for several years now. We have the opportunity to recapture the money that we spent out for overtime. So Queen Anne's County, through the vendor, has sent a check to the city for $1,400 and we're requesting that that money be transferred back into our overtime and salaries account.
Okay. Any questions from council?
None.
Discussion? Good. Consensus to move this forward?
Yes. Yes.
Perfect. All right. Thank you. All right, thank you. Yes. All right, a budget amendment to approve the WWTP materials building renovations. Good afternoon, Waterworks Director Corey Cameron.
So Department of Waterworks would like to move money from our operating account, from our skilled service operating account, in the amount of $67,000 into the budget account for the materials warehouse building. This is the second time we've put this out to bid and it's come in over budget. The first time it came in way over budget, it was like $500 and some thousand dollars. We took it back, we've redone the, the proposal, a lot of the work we've done in-house with our wastewater treatment plant staff, they demoed a lot of the building, we filled some of the tanks, field ops helped with removing some of the underground tanks. We pulled a lot out of the project to bring the price down and we've got it all where we needed to go. This building, you know, ever since the plant upgrade, we need a building for all the equipment and all of our spare parts, all to be in one place, keep track of them, and we're getting some age on the upgraded plant now, so we need to get this building done. So we would like to move the money over into the project account and get it to completion because we came in under budget again, so, and we just want to get this to completion this time, so we can get moving forward.
Thank you. What questions do we have from council?
It was $249.43.
There's no way that you can negotiate it down with that company that brought the low bid in?
Well, that, that is the low bid. Yeah, and we, like I said, the first time we put this out the bid, it was like $580 some thousand dollars, but we came back, we did a lot of the work in-house. So we've taken it probably as low as we're going to get it, but, so. The funds we have available were funds we had from that BNR grant this year. We were going to use it for SCADA, but we feel safe that we can put that off till next year because we really need to get this building done.
All my questions were, were here. Any other questions?
No questions. I just know that we've had ongoing discussions about it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Consensus to move forward? Yes?
Yes.
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 Perfect. Thank you.
All right.
Yes. Recovery homes discussion. We have City Administrator Andy Kitzro, City Attorney Laura Ryan, and Housing Community Development Director Muir.
Sure. Hi, everybody. I'm going to sit over here so I don't have crowding around that microphone. There's a presentation that goes along with it, some slides that I think Chris is going to get up on the board so everybody can look at it. So that'll be coming up momentarily. But I'm going to defer most of the conversation lead to Muir and Laura to walk us through some of the information. So you can see the slides up here. That'll be, the crux of the conversation will be around these slides.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone. It's good to see you all.
I, I hope that the font is okay for everybody. I tried to make sure it was bigger font so that we could see it on the screen. And we'll make sure everybody has...
If I can see it, then you can. Because I can't see anything.
Yeah, and well, Andy, because I know he needs to...
I'm close to that.
Yeah, okay, so he's good. All right. So this has kind of been an ongoing topic and issue this year. One of the, one of the issues that we initially ran into from prior discussions about the Oxford House case and those, and those things, there was no process for how we handled it. And so the, one of the things that can be a little confusing as there are sometimes multiple terms used for one type of use. So, so we've tried to put this together to help break that down and then provide you the process going forward, how we're going to handle these, when these come to us. So it works. Okay. So there are what we would call residential care and treatment centers. And in the, what we would refer to as recovery homes, there are three levels. So initially, there would be an inpatient treatment facility, which we would refer to as something like Hudson. So that's where someone would go in. And then the, for like their initial, if they were going into the process, they would be there for a period of time. A lot of that treatment is worked on between the patient, insurance, and their doctor, how long they go through that level. Once they've completed that level, the next level is what we would, what is sometimes referred to as the residential treatment facility, which would be like a 3.1 treatment facility, or also the term halfway house. But there's also another category that kind of fits into this is what we refer to as residential boarding care. So this is a facility where it does not necessarily apply to recovery. There are also other uses where there are people who are staying in homes where they do require some form of treatment, whether it be for mental health or some other issue, but it's in a, in what would be traditionally a, a single-family home. So that also kind of broads into how some of those, because some of those places, people do receive specific medical treatment, administration of their medications, any type of, of meeting with a mental health care provider, or any other type of treatment that would fall under this. And then the last stage, which is what we would refer to as a domiciliary care facility, did I say that correctly?
Yeah, great.
Which is a non-treatment recovery facility. I did practice that word several times. So this is more of a, of a recovery house where this is essentially the last stage. Some people do have some insurance for this piece, but then there's also people who do not have insurance coverage for this piece. And so this is kind of more into some other programs, but it's not considered medical treatment. Okay. So that's the three levels. So here's, here's the process. So an inpatient treatment facility, where, where this would fall under would be under DID, which the Department of Infrastructure and Development and their building inspectors would do an occupancy inspection. So they have their process to determine occupancy. Then the other piece of these facilities would be the fire marshal inspection. So fire marshal would come in, he, he would do, he would determine what type of sprinkler system is required, and then it also has to have a central fire alarm system. Yes, sir?
Real quick, so when you say occupancy, you mean whether it can or cannot be occupied or dead?
Um, it's, it's more, DID focuses more on that it's okay for people to live here. They don't necessarily set how many people can live there. They're just saying that it can be occupied. So that is the inpatient treatment facility, which is, would be the number one on your first stage.
Do you get your mic?
Nope. That's good. Okay. So the next one would be, your number two would be the residential treatment facility. So this second phase would, would also be under DID and would follow the same process where they would inspect it for occupancy and then the fire marshal would do their inspections. So then when we get to the domiciliary care facilities or recovery home, this actually falls under HCDD. So code enforcement would oversee this process. They would have to register as a landlord, register the property as a rental, and then code enforcement would inspect the property. So when we go through how, so what I, I can speak more to on specifically what my, how my department would look at this. The code enforcement inspection would, would look at it, determine if it falls under the quarter-two zoning, and then occupancy, if not occupancy, is set under the ICC Residential Housing Code, which is based, now I'm going to go through, I got examples here on how we determine what the housing code says. So ICC Residential Housing Code sets a bedroom at 70 square feet for one adult. If it's a bedroom that is larger than that and you can put two adults in it, then it's 50 square feet per additional adult. So if you had a bedroom that was 125 square feet, we could put two adults in there. So then the number of bedrooms in the house would be based on the size of the bedrooms. The bathroom is the other component to this. So if you have a home that has three bedrooms and, and maybe you could, by the bedrooms, you could put 10 people in it, but if there's only two full bathrooms, you can only put eight people in it. So it's four adults per full bathroom, which a full bathroom is defined as a toilet, a sink, and a bathtub or a shower. So that's kind of how we would determine how many people can safely live in that property. Basements, so basements cannot have bedrooms unless the ceiling heights, the ceiling height meets regulation, which the ceiling has to be seven feet, and then there is internal, external ingress, egress from the basement. So they have to be able to enter and exit from the basement. And then, so how are properties identified? So...
Muir, real quick, I know it's on your slide. I don't know if you want to touch base on what is defined as a bedroom or not, if you guys got into...
Yeah, so the, the other piece of a bedroom would be if you, if a bedroom has multiple, if a room has multiple entrances into the room...
Could you use the mic, just to make sure people...
If, if a, if a room has multiple entrances, so say somebody converted a, a dining room into a bedroom, and say there's an entry that goes into the kitchen, one that goes into the living room, or another room, that is not considered a bedroom. Because with the bedroom, there's an expectation of privacy. And so if you have multiple entrances into a, a, a room, unless that wall is closed off, then, and then there's also, so when you do certain things in a property, then you have to get certain permits for adding a bathroom or any, or fixing a bedroom into, or another room into a bedroom.
And that's not like a walk-in bathroom attached to a bedroom, a master suite, or a closet. It's, it is a separate housing room.
So even a, even a, a bathroom that would also have to be considered, if it was a bathroom that's attached to a master bedroom, so that's not a common bathroom, so you're only going to have one bedroom that's going to have access to that bathroom. So that bathroom may not count in the number of bathrooms in a house. So that's, so those are some other things you have to look into. But an area like a dining room would, would be considered a common area in a house, like a living room or a family room in a kitchen. So the other piece on this is how are properties identified? So every time a property is sold within the city of Salisbury, it is, there's a, part of that sale process is the property transfer affidavit. So everybody, when they buy a house, in the hundred documents, the mayor knows, he's bought many houses, there's a stack of documents that you sign. This is one of those. And on it, there traditionally have been three, three things. But I'll, I'll get into that in a minute. The next one is also the DID, I jumped ahead on myself. The DID has a change of occupancy request for a property, and then if a complaint is filed. So, there we go. So the property transfer affidavit is completed at the time of sale. The purchaser would choose what is the use of the property going to be. Is it going to be owner-occupied, rental, commercial, or a recovery home or a care home? So that is now, we've added that to the property transfer affidavit, and we updated that a couple weeks ago, and we have sent that out to Coastal Association of Realtors and the SPOA and other emails and communication that we had with those in the community. So whenever we get a property transfer affidavit, that automatically comes to our office. And then HCD will determine what action is going to be taken based on what they've selected. So if it's something that's commercial, if it's, you know, in that realm, we'll send that over to DID so that they are aware.
Could you go back one slide, please?
Sure. Maybe.
I was just, what was the verbiage? Okay, complaint filed. I just want to know what...
Yeah, I have a, I have another slide for that.
Very nice.
So the next, hold on, I might have hit the button too many times. Okay, there we go. The next one is the DID change of occupancy permit application. So they have something on their side where it's submitted through their department. Once used to determine, is determined if the fire marshal will inspect, if it is an inpatient treatment facility, residential treatment facility, or if it's a domiciliary care facility, they'll refer that to us. And... And then if it's complaints filed, so either through the Citizen Reporter app, or we also have links on our page, DID's page, people can file a complaint, and we get various complaints every day. Yes?
On the actual affidavit, transfer affidavit, you can push a box that checks whether it's a, a...
You will now.
You do?
You will now, yes.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
And the language is written pretty broad and clear, so I think that it will kind of cover a lot of different range, ranges of facilities.
Yeah, and then there's, there's...
Can you get notified of every transfer, commercial or residential now?
Correct. Yes, yes. So, so then when the complaint's filed, the department that receives a complaint will look at the complaint, look at the property, and then will determine if it's our inspection, or if it's DID. And every now and then, we forward stuff to DID, and then sometimes they forward stuff to us. And the complaint forms on the website, people use them for everything. We, we were getting the complaints about trash pickup, people wanting to know when trash was going to be picked up, so we just forwarded that to field ops. So people use the complaints for everything.
So can I just, I don't know, I think just to kind of bring this home, and because I've sat here a number of these meetings where we discussed this, and I think council wanted some type of corrective action, or for us to figure out how we could remedy the situation or get in on like the front end of it. And this is what Muir has done with his department, with the legal team, and trying to find out about where these homes are being located in the city. And that's why we amended that property transfer affidavit to, so we would see it on the front end and can get a jump on it, as well as we've made some changes to our own internal forms, so it can alert us to it, any potential issues early on, so we can send out the appropriate team to figure out what's going on and respond accordingly. So these are our measures to try to, you know, corrective action, which you have requested.
Sure. Good.
And part of the goal of that was to make sure that all the different departments were working together.
Correct.
And so we sat down with all of the different departments and legal, and kind of walked through the process for the various kinds of homes that could be open.
Sure.
And pinpoint which department it goes to and when, so that way everyone can work together.
Absolutely. And while you're on that, and I just went on here, and it was pretty easy to find where to make a complaint. Additionally, because sometimes it reaches our email boxes and, and, you know, and the mayor and the admin, are you all still, just to keep a record of them, if there's a, a forward from one of our, our offices to you all, is that still going in, in the same system that, that this is?
Well, there's two systems. There's the report of concern, which is the, the...
It's the formal, that we track statistics and all that stuff with the citizen complaint.
On our, on our page, there's, there's one, and it goes to, there's a, there's an email group that goes to our department.
Sure.
Now, if somebody does like a Public Information Act request, so then that email, that, that form would go to, it goes, I believe it goes to the mayor's office. I know it goes to legal.
Sure.
And then it goes to the appropriate people in our department.
I guess what I'm asking is just to make sure that they're being tracked accurately.
Yeah.
Would you prefer, and that's one initial step for us, but if, you know, either one of our offices receive a complaint, would you, I see where it says reported by, would you want us to put this in here to...
You could, because once that goes in there and we get it.
Okay.
So if it's a property-related issue.
Sure.
We then take that and create a case and compake, which is what we manage our, our investigations.
I know that we would love for citizens, which I know we have people, citizens who do take advantage of the resources that we have, the, either the complaint tracker or this here. But again, our emails are open for those sorts of things, and I don't want things to get lost in the Salz, where if I email you and then, and we want to make sure that there's a check and a balance for that.
Yeah, so when it's done in there, it's sent to multiple email addresses.
Okay.
And when it's, and that, and I can go on the website myself, and I can pull up every complaint that can submit it to my department. It stays in, it stays in the, the system that we manage the website in, too.
Okay. I know we had some questions...
I think some people might have also publicly wanted to have some comments or questions.
Yes. Additionally, can you send this?
I've sent it to Kim.
Okay.
I'll do it in a Word doc or a PDF doc. I think that's more friendly, because it's a pretty large file.
Perfect. Thank you. We have a, we have three public comments as of yet. Mr. Jeff Dean? Yep, if you don't mind. And then just make sure you state your name and your address for the record, please. And you have three minutes.
Jeff Dean, I live on Middle Boulevard, Salisbury. I, I think the elephant in the room remains this. This process does not account for zoning. There are other determin, there are other taxonomies of group homes that have not been addressed by this document here. One includes sober living homes. There are a lot of different terminologies used for halfway homes and group homes. One of the issues that this process is not addressing or acknowledging is that halfway homes, to be acknowledged under Maryland protections for zoning, have to include an element of carcerity. I have just learned this term in the last month. Carcerity involves some type of imprisonment. A halfway home involves the justice system. So if, if a, if a recovery home is claiming protections under halfway homes, then they are operating at some level with cooperation underneath the justice system. That there is some level of half carcerity, incarceration, involved in that, living in that home. They're on bracelets, they're on some kind of monitoring, something like that. And they are granted some type of protection as either a small halfway home or a large halfway home. Depend, and that would depend on what kind of zoning. So small halfway homes can exist in what I understand to be R1 or something like that, basically residential areas. But a halfway home has carcerity. So if the homes that are processing under here, I think one of the things that needs to be considered are, are the, are you declaring this a halfway home with carcerity, or is this a recovery home only? What is the full nature of the relationship between the landlord or the, the proprietor and the people who live in that home? Also, what we are seeing right now, this process is looking forward, and I appreciate that very much. I think it's incomplete, and I very highly encourage, Mayor, to get interested parties from all across the city involved in this process, which still has not happened. I get three minutes every two weeks to share my next thought. We can sit down and talk this through. What it is not addressing is what has already happened with halfway, with sober, sober living homes. So what we have right now is the two homes on Middle Boulevard, which were Level 2, now appear to be transitioning to Level 3.1. We haven't had that addressed yet. The evidence of that is the fact that these homes now have commercial fire department connection hose inlets on the outside of their home. One of these homes is in the historic district. So now we have a sign that says FDC and an exterior connection for, for a fire hose to hook up to it. They have commercial surveillance systems on the outside that can reach to their neighbors. I have not seen any historic commission in, permit process, no big yellow sign like we all get, and I haven't seen any permits taped to the door to show they have commercial, they have commercial fire systems going in. When I, when I renovated my, I understand, when I renovated my porch, I had permits taped to my door so people could walk it by and knew I had permits. I have seen none of that. Thank you.
Lisa Gingrich?
Yeah, my name's Lisa Gingrich, 316 North Division Street, and I'm using the microphone so that everybody can hear me. Could I please request that everybody here use your microphone? Because sitting over there in the black zone, we hear maybe every third word that you guys say. So I just want to make that comment. I concur with what Mr. Dean has said. My big question is, what about zoning? Does it matter anymore? Also, his comment about, let's talk about this with the actual people that live in the city before you make up all your plans and presentations and codify things. Actually get input before. People were talking about front end. That's the big front end, is let's get input, input on that really front end before all of this stuff gets signed, sealed, and delivered. Still don't understand what's the level of state law versus local law? Is there federal input on this type of thing? Because in the Newtown neighborhood, that seems to be the industry now. In Salisbury is halfway houses, recovery centers, whatever the terminology is. And you're taking single-family neighborhoods and you're not only permitting, it seems like anytime somebody wants to do a halfway house, fines, they do not have to go through historic, because the place is on Walnut and a place on its Hudson Health, on Chestnut and Walnut, between the two of them is a gargantuan gazebo that was put up recently. It's got to be a $50,000 gazebo. And I never saw anything about historic permission, anything like that. It's, it's huge. It takes up virtually the entire backyard. So, you know, where, I'm sorry if this is rambling, because there's so much information here that goes in and things that are happening. It's, it's like, what about the people that want to live there as a single-family home? And then let's add in the winky-winky rooming houses that are being allowed, particularly in, in Newtown. I think we've got four of them going so far, where a single-family neighborhood, we have buses, vans, transports going through all day. They pull up on sidewalks, they honk. It's, it's like, okay, fine, this is nice what we saw here today, but where's, where's more input before you do something like this, where you can actually listen to the citizens and the people can talk for longer than four minutes? It would be really nice, instead of feeling like, okay, you've said your thing, now go sit down and shut up. So I'm going to go sit down and shut up right now.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Worf? Wolf?
Also, I will mention the fact, please use your microphones back here, we can't hear anything.
Yeah, okay.
I'm 83, I may be a little bit impaired, but I honestly can't hear a thing, particularly the second lady in from the end didn't hear a word to say. Also, just as an off...
Sir, could you state your name and your address for the record before you begin speaking? Could you state your name and your record, please, for the record? State your name and your address.
All right, Worf Wolf, resident of Newtown, 300 East William Street.
Thank you.
Been a resident of 50 years. Also, as an aside comment, the storyboard out here needs to be used. It should be advertised, you're having this meeting tonight, and further any other meetings you have periodically, so that the residents can find out, other than on the internet, what's happening. With that, I'll mention my comments regarding halfway houses. I might mention I have some experience in this field. I was a second director of Maple Shade Homes here in the county. We were all rural with those homes, except for Pocahontas. And then later on in my second career, at age 70, I worked at the clinic downtown for go-getters, and I'm acquainted with that program. So some of the comments made by Mr. Voda had some reflection on go-getters. The proliferation of group homes, treatment homes, halfway houses, whatever you wish to call them, is unconscionable in Newtown. Eight percent, eight and a half percent of the houses in Newtown are either halfway houses, treatment houses, or what have you. So the concept of halfway houses is not to group everybody on a campus. They should be spread out throughout the community, to introduce them back into the community, and to be involved in their neighborhoods, doing things like all neighbors generally do. Picking up trash from other homes, helping their neighbors, etc. To be successful, group homes should not be jammed up. And that's all I had to say. And I might mention, I feel they have become a cottage industry here in Salisbury, particularly in Newtown. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I do want to have a couple additional comments.
Sure.
To keep this conversation going. Speaking to zoning, I know that was not in our slides, but if I could put Laura on the spot a little bit, just to help clarify some of those areas, on what controls within the zoning code we have locally versus at a state level in those three categories of housing, and if there's any opportunities legislatively to control proximity, some people refer it as density, of homes. Question, addressing this stuff specifically in Newtown, with the quantity, anything that you want to add to this, just to clarify some of those points?
Sure. So although we didn't specifically mention zoning, it's likely because it's kind of built into the different layers that Mayor went through. So when someone is seeking to turn a residential home into one of these facilities, and they come to the city, it goes through a couple different departments, each of them have somewhat of a say in zoning. So for instance, in the presentation, it was identified that if the home is providing some kind of treatment, it would go before DID for an inspection, it would also go in front of the fire marshal. When DID looks at that application, they're going to look to make sure that that use is permitted in that district, and that comes from the zoning code. If an application comes to the city and no treatment is being provided, such as a recovery home, then although that may not trigger an inspection by DID and the fire marshal, what happens is they are referred to HCDD, and then they would look at the zoning in terms of whether or not it's allowed, and they would be the department that also looks at, not only can the use be allowed, but how it can be occupied in terms of the number of people. So it's built into those inspections and those analyses that the different departments would do.
And Laura, if someone was interested, if this council, or there is a desire to modify zoning code through the planning commission, or just additional reasons, what is permitted, what wouldn't be permitted? Is there certain things that can and cannot be brought up as an option?
Sure. So the zoning, in order to modify the zoning code, it's quite a process. It goes in front of the planning commission, and then in front of you all as well. We've looked at it, and at this point, the zoning code seems to cover the different uses that we're seeing in the city of Salisbury. And the concern that we have is although we have a zoning code that sets out certain things, it's going to be trumped by state and federal law. And so we could write one thing into our zoning code, and if someone has a workaround in federal law, it doesn't matter what's in our code, we have to go by what the federal law says.
Let me ask you something. A number of years ago, we went through this process where we went from 4 to 2 as far as density, because of the college student predominantly. I think that covered the entire city, except for R5, I think was the only one that was excluded. I can't, I can't, I think that's it. Pretty sure that's it.
It's the A's, yeah.
R5A, okay. But then you start talking about this, what defines a bedroom, as if every bedroom can be occupied. Now, defining a bedroom for the purposes of single-family use, meaning kids can live in, people can live in, versus unrelated occupancy, seems to be two different things. And that's where I'm getting confused, as to how you guys are defining it. You're saying, on the one hand, we have a 4 to 2 citywide, except R5A, and then on the other hand, we're defining the bedrooms as somehow we can upgrade the occupancy based on bedroom use.
Yeah, they're kind of two parallel tracks. Do you want to answer?
Yeah, because I made some...
Oh, great.
So there, so there, when it comes to the zoning, there's two pieces with the R1, R2, R3, R5, all that. So the first part of it is use. So when it's an R1, it's single-family use. R2 is a duplex. R3 is categorized as other uses.
Okay.
So then, when it actually, when it moves up to the R4, which is about the use, there's two things that trigger a fire marshal inspection. So it would be, if the use is going to have six or more residents, or six or more people living at the property, that would, they would be required to put a sprinkler system in.
Yeah, that's where I'm confused. See, we've jumped from single-family to now six unrelated people, and we're talking sprinklers. How'd we get there?
Yeah, so this is about property use. So this is specifically, if it was built, if it's supposed to be R1, it's a single-family home, really not supposed to use it for anything else. If it's an R2, it's a duplex.
Okay.
Which is, you know, and then R3 can be multifamily, other uses, that's where some of these other uses come in.
What's Middle Boulevard?
R3.
That whole area, Middle Boulevard, that whole area is R3?
It's...
That's the use, under the building code.
When it comes to the other piece of it, or of the other piece of the, what they call developmental zoning standards, we get into, this is where 4 to 2 falls in. So you could have a property that has an R3 use, but then under the zoning standard, the developmental standard, you would have a property that is an R5. So, I know this can be, so when a property under the zoning standard is R5, that is about lot size. So an R5 is a lot that is 5,000 square feet. So when you move up the ladder to R8, that's 8,000 square feet. So an R5 lot was what they were targeting for the 4 to 2. Then when you get into the R5A, that is the multifamily-type home. So these are the homes that were, maybe back in the 40s or 50s, were converted into apartments.
Yeah.
Which was a, which is considered a, that's when they got into the legal non-conforming use.
Yeah, I know that. That's a separate deal.
Yeah.
I guess what I'm trying to say is that the whole legal battle was fought for a year and a half on the subject of 4 to 2 legislation, which the zoning code hasn't changed. And I guess what I'm trying to say, trying to find out, is how is it that the entire 4 to 2 legislation was predicated on 4 to 2, and has the very language you're talking about in R3 and Middle Boulevard? That doesn't make sense to me. And I'd like to research it a little bit more.
So I think the way to look at it is that they are kind of two parallel tracks. So a property, you would look at 4 to 2 to see how many people can reside there, whether it's two unrelated, whether it's four. And that controls, unless there's been some kind of accommodation granted that exempts the property from that, 4 to 2 controls. The other track is the actual structure of the building, and whether or not if you have four, can have four unrelated people under 4 to 2, and you look at the structure, and they go and do their inspection, well, really, there's not enough bedrooms, or there's not enough bathrooms, or one of the bedrooms was illegally converted in the basement. So first, they have to be able to satisfy 4 to 2, and can only have the number of unoccupied people.
Unrelated.
Yeah, unrelated people. And then you would look at the structure to make sure that that number of people can actually live there. So that would count for any property that is not providing treatment, that's just essentially a rental.
Now, we just jumped subjects there. So let's say we had a four-bedroom house on Middle Boulevard, that's an R3. Under the 4 to 2 law, if it did not have an occupancy of four people that got grandfathered in, it was my understanding that the 4 to 2 law reduced the density to, regardless of how many bedrooms, legal or otherwise?
That's correct, unless there's a request for an exemption under federal law, that would ask that that property be exempted from 4 to 2 to be allowed to have more people. That's the reasonable accommodation analysis that someone would make, that they would say that the zoning code only allows two, I need a reasonable accommodation from that zoning code to have more, and this is why.
Okay. Yeah, I think, again, you guys have done the research, but I'm struggling with that component of what you're saying, and I'm not saying you're wrong. What I am saying is it doesn't seem consistent. I mean, yeah, I don't think...
So, let me, let me ask, can I ask some questions?
Please.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so the homes on Middle Boulevard, are any of those homes, were they occupied that are not within our current code? The ones for the group homes?
I don't think I understand that question.
The halfway homes, the resident, the treatment center homes, the two homes that are there, that we've been talking about for months, are, did they occupy under residential or treatment facility halfway houses under our current code? How did they get from a residential home to a halfway house? Did they just occupy it like that initially? Did they come to the city? Are they there right now under our code? Was that allowed to happen under our current code? Was that development of their...
One of the things is it's still, it's still in process at the moment, with, it's been in different processes. I don't know how much I want to, until it's, because it's with the fire marshal at the moment.
If you were asking, Angela, part of the process that we talked about in the presentation was identifying properties that want to be used in a different capacity. Those properties on Middle Boulevard specifically started to be occupied in a different capacity prior to receiving an accommodation or any additional request. So that, so through complaint, is how we were notified of a different use, which started the whole process and a lot more of the review. So there was not what we would consider the proper process.
When you say accommodation, I mean, what if a landlord said, I want to have four unrelated college kids in there, I need an accommodation? What would be your reaction to that?
The accommodation is only under federal law for groups of individuals who meet the definition of disabled. And so they would have to be disabled college kids. And so the law has said that people in drug recovery, as long as they're not active users and they're in recovery, meet the definition of disabled under federal law.
So that's where this accommodation you're trying to glean from?
Yes. Yeah, it's accommodation to provide housing with people, to people with disabilities that require accommodation in order to have housing like the rest of the community.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mayor.
Are there limits on the accommodation?
The accommodation is, every time, it's a fact-specific accommodation. So, and the burden is on the property owner, so the property owner would have to come and say, oh, you know, these are, these people, they meet, they meet the definition of disability, and this is the accommodation that we need, and this is why it's necessary and reasonable. And then it's in the city's discretion to weigh those things and decide whether or not they've met that burden.
Has that been addressed with you, what you just required?
Has what been...
What you were just saying, when you said the property owner needs to come to you, go through the process of this change, answer your questions, adhere to the numbers, et cetera, et cetera. Has that all taken place, because both of you are saying that this is still in process?
So, there has been communication, specifically with the properties that are being discussed, between our legal team and the legal team that represents that development, back and forth. There has been some discussion there with some final recommendations. That process has been received by the property owner. I do not believe that decision has been appealed to date, but there is a request to potentially use the facility in a different capacity. So there is this limbo state right now that we are working through. But I think that's the best way to, if there is anything to add to that.
I mean, are people already in the houses, is what I'm asking?
Yes.
Could I ask a question? Go ahead. No, that's all right. My thing is, I just heard the mayor ask a question about college students. And then I heard you say, if they met the criteria of being disabled. I'm not understanding that. I'm truly not understanding it, because we do have college students who are living in places more than at least four, and they're not disabled, and we know that, and the city knows that.
So they're probably violating the zoning code. What I was saying is that if you're going to ask for an accommodation, which is essentially an exemption under the zoning code, the only way to do that is to do that under the federal law. And those laws relate to people with disabilities, so specifically people who would occupy a recovery home.
Yes. And then during the time when 4 to 2 was enacted, there was a period of time where landlords who had been operating with four or five students in a property, they actually were given a period of time where they could seek, like to be grandfathered in. So there's a number of those properties that are on the HCDD website, there's a list of those properties. And if they, but there's also the understanding that if they violate anything in that code, or, and it has happened, where a property was granted four, and then it was reduced to two because of violation. So there has been time, there's precedent where they have lost that grandfather status.
Sure. So to not, to not labor this too much longer, and I think it would be great if any parties here, the most information you can give us about the specific issue of the why residents are here and residents' questions, I know there's a pending or open case or open complaint. Any information you can give us on that particular issue would probably be best to negate any other questions. And then additionally, I think my council members and I will, I think, why, one, it seems like this has been an ongoing issue for quite some time, so can we answer why or how that comes to play? Two, why it even came to play? And then, three, are we to expect this for any future person who wants to open up a recovery or a halfway house when they come here? Should we expect this amount of time to be, you know, exhausted on something like this? So could you?
Yes.
A little history, if I may, was, a lot of this stemmed from the Oxford House lawsuits.
Okay.
Oxford House ran recovery homes across... Oxford House ran recovery homes across the country. There were multiple lawsuits, and I, and I believe Oxford House lost all the lawsuits. So that was something that was in process for years, I think even from when I was starting on the council up until last year. So everybody at, now have been reviewing the outcome of those cases. I think in that, that we were still, as a, as a city and other places, were reviewing the outcome of that. And then, and then now it was, okay, how do we define a process? I believe the, the issue on Middle Boulevard, they were starting their process and beginning to operate under the assumption that, that they were okay to, to do that. And I think that, that was what triggered the issue here because there were complaints about it. And then at that point, and this was something that started back in May, April, I believe, we, we had not defined a process. And so that was what we were trying to figure out was a proper process to, when, when they're identified, what's the proper way to move and handle them from that. So, and, and there, and there could be more work, and I think more work could be done on it and further discussions. It's, it's.
So typically, if we, let's, if we go a little bit broader, when there is a violation to zoning code, and let's specifically talk about occupancy, whether it's four to two, too many college kids, overcrowding, somebody is trying to convert something to illegal use, when we find out that there is an illegal use occurring, typically the clock would start. And then there is a corrective action period of time that allows that person to modify that housing situation, and then with, without doing that, then typically some sort of municipal infraction or citation happens as a result of that. So there is this, there's this timeline that exists. I need, I'm not as first on where we are with that timeline, but because we had given a resolution and come to an agreement with the properties on Middle Boulevard, I don't know if, if there was a specific timeline, if there, a compliance timeline that is still outstanding, or if everything is still within that window.
There, there was an initial resolution and then a request for a change of use. So, so there, there was a timeline that, that was initially set, and they were working towards that timeline. But then this other, this other request came in, which then we basically moved from my department to another department.
Yeah. And I wasn't trying to ask, so, because again, from, from the public, this may seem like we are allowing, you know, people to, we just explained, you know, the rules and the zoning and everything, and then we just explained that someone's been, you know, acting against that. So that may seem like we are allowing people to go against the zoning and laws that we have on the books. I'm just wanting to kind of explain that to say that we acknowledge there was an issue. We, we, we heard the complaint.
We've, we've not physically kicked people out and made those buildings vacant, those houses vacant while we are working through this process. So that is the question that people are asking.
I think, I think for me, you know, I, I recognize this, this is a big problem, big problem nationally, definitely. But at the same time, we got to be respectful of neighbors, and I think that just, I think we better really have done our homework on this density exception stuff because it's really, you know, going to impact single-family neighborhoods. And I think anybody that lives in a neighborhood, you know, don't necessarily, I mean, people don't want them popping up all around their neighborhood for a host of reasons. And I'm, I'm not saying that because I'm against people in recovery, I'm glad they're in recovery at the end of the day. But, you know, it's a challenging thing, and we need to be, really have done our homework, I think, just to make sure that we're doing the right thing by the neighborhoods and by the folks that ultimately, because, you know, there, there is a tendency in this business to want to put more density. More density means money, you know, that's, that's the bottom line. It's an ugly thing. And we need to be protecting those that are seeking recovery as well as the neighborhoods as well, so.
And Mayor, to add on to that, if I may, real quick.
I, I know Councilwoman Blake has a, has a pending question or, or a comment, so I want to make sure we're respectful.
I just want to, have there been any other homes in Salisbury that have been found to be in violation of our codes in regards to halfway homes, treatment facilities? I know we're talking about Middle Boulevard, but there's also a cluster in North Division, there's some obviously in Newtown. Has any of those homes been found? Are there any others in the city that have been found to be in violation?
I, I think in, in our specific piece that we handled, there, I think they were all three to 3.1, they had already been in the other use, so it wasn't something we handled.
My understanding is anyone that was, any home that was brought to the attention of HCDD was looked into and made a determination about whether or not it complies with the code, or whether or not we needed to work with the owners to get them to comply.
But there was more than just the ones on Middle Boulevard?
There was one that had been operating prior to four to two.
The person we're talking about on Middle Boulevard had one, or maybe two more that we weren't aware of. Am I wrong about that?
Correct.
Okay.
And, and, but they were within the, they're, they're, they were within the, where they were and the zoning that they were in did not apply to the four to two.
I think she was asking whether they're ones that got discovered after the fact.
Yeah, so any of the ones that got discovered, yeah, his office has looked into them. And there's also, a lot of these are registered with the state, so online there's lists of the different addresses and stuff, and those lists were reviewed to determine whether or not they're compliant.
Could I ask another question? Is it, I just, I need to know, is it because the places are not compliant, or are the complainants complaining because there are masses of people there and there are soon to be drug use or any of the other in the recovery homes? I mean, I just, I'm asking a question because I know when I stayed on Walnut Street, I don't want to shoot, there was, there was one, there, there was one there, matter of fact, almost right across the street from me. And I've never heard of any complaints from that place, never, ever. I know of a few others. And I've asked the residents, do you have a problem with these places? And they said, no, no. You know, they, and there are places all around Salisbury, just not on Middle Boulevard, it's just not in the Newtown area, but they're everywhere. They are everywhere, and a lot of people don't have complaints. So I'm wondering, I just want to know, is it because of a misconception of the recovery homes, or what is it? I mean, I know we have that law four to. But I just, I don't understand people not wanting to help others.
No, the only other comment I wanted to make is because you are the legislative body, if there's things that you, takeaways for us to consider and think about, some of the things that were brought up in some of the public comments, dealt specifically with housing, excuse me, historic districts, compliance, you must comply with that stuff, so we need those complaint-driven. But there's been other actions that have been requested, whether it's fencing or other requirements, if we want to explore those when it comes to any of these facilities, if there is additional regulatory practices you would want us to put into place when looking or considering these things that are not trumped by state or federal law. We can do that, we can explore some of those conversations. We just would be seeking some guidance on what some of those may would be, so that we could, you know, present some additional checks and balances to this group.
I also feel that, from what I believe Mr. Dean and another person, I think if we're going to do any, make any changes, it's apparent it needs to be looked into from the discussion that's taken place. I think it's imperative that you have someone representing each of the five districts, and it just doesn't become something we decide. I think they need to give us their input and come to a civil agreement by everyone. I appreciate the comment that was made, I think, by Mr. Boda or the attorney, that moving forward, if nothing else, this has shown that some things have gone awry in the past, and it is our responsibility as a city council and to the people coming here and the people we represent to fix some things that need fixing. And I think we need their input in order to do so.
Thank you. Seeing other questions or concerns, we'll look forward to some updates, and we'll continue this conversation, hopefully it's in a brief state.
Thank you.
Mr. Kitzro, the budget amendment for Zen City Community Engagement Platform.
Correct.
And Mr. Younger.
All right, so talking about community engagement, this is a great segue.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Was there?
Oh, if Lynn had, Lynn, if you wanted to comment, please, comment on the last topic, sorry.
Hang tight, we can't hear anyone on Zoom.
Not muted.
It was one moment, I know, we can't hear you, hold on.
Uh, one second, we're working through it. Michelle, can you give us a test?
Can you hear me?
Sing your favorite song, Michelle, please, we'll let you know when we can hear you.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. Shall I start, shall I start singing, start singing Manamana again?
Yeah, sorry about that, it sounds like you guys had some comments in the last items. I can bring my, my back up.
Lynn wanted to have, make a public comment, I believe, on the previous subject.
Yes, please. Ms. Bratton?
Am I, am I, am I able?
You.
This is Lynn Bratton, I'm home, and I'm on Zoom, and I live on South Boulevard, at 303 South Boulevard in Salisbury. And historically, I can remind you that there was a house on, that faced Camden, that had some of these same issues, and it's now an owner occupied, owner occupied home. And those, that, that system worked in some way because the folks there did not meet with some of the guidelines that were presented. But one of the things that Mr. Kitzro just mentioned at the end, was there anything else that we need to take into consideration? I would remind you that many of these places are on streets where there is no off-street parking, and they are in neighborhoods where families have one or two cars. And if you put eight people into a home, people that are coming to service the, the clients to provide services, perhaps even the clients themselves are going to need places to park, and I think that needs to be included in some of your guidelines. The ICC that Mr. Buddha, Muir referenced only went as far as the bedroom, square footage, and the number of bathrooms when he explained it. Nobody mentioned off-street parking. When I applied for an exemption on the four to two rules, the amount of parking that I could provide for four individuals to live in one of the houses, which was granted, had to, had to be sufficient to sustain that request. And again, I don't see any reference to any parking. I do know that when the, the housing that was behind me that faced Camden Avenue, there were people pulling into the backyard, picking people up on a routine basis, there were people standing in front waiting for rides. I never knew from one day to the other which people were really there, because I tried to outreach and make friends with folks, and it changed, it changed daily. I seldom saw the same people more than twice. And then there would be other folks living there. So to answer to your question, April, that was one of the concerns that I faced, living in a single-family neighborhood in a residential section, and knowing that there were multiple different people living in the home. Had it been a residence that was rented to four college students or three college students, the landlord would have had documentation as to which three, and they probably would have been signing a lease for at least a year, possibly six months, but at least a year, and there would have been consistency. That's it. I appreciate your efforts, and, and I think we do need to keep talking about this and working through it, because I think there are many layers that have not been addressed. And I understand disabilities, and I understand single-family homes, and I understand four to two, have been around a long time, and I think we can, can continue to come up with, with resolutions that will meet all the needs. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great.
All right, Mr. Kitzro?
Yes, so before you is a budget amendment to provide funding for Zen City 360 Essentials, which is a community engagement platform. As you're well aware, as part of, not only the mayor's platform, but also yours, is a desire for increased transparency and communication with the public, more of a robust, dynamic involvement in them in the discussion. So we have been looking around the marketplace and found Zen City 360 Essentials, which essentially is a community engagement platform that is, is multiple-pronged. It allows us to have a word-facing domain in multi-language, to be able to provide surveys, project updates to the community residents, to allow them to understand what is happening in real time, but also get feedback and input in advance through surveys. But also, we have an analytics tool that does essentially data mining through organic feeds that allows us to essentially get a temperature check of what is the public sentiments toward what is going on in the city. And that is mining information and comments through our social media platforms, our professional channels, but also through unofficial channels that aren't necessarily our platforms. So in real time, if, if people are asking a question on, should we be doing that, what is people's opinions on treatment facilities, recovery homes in the community, we can gather that information in real time and see what people are thinking about, what questions they're asking, what are the hot topics within that, to then be able to have a more robust conversation. In addition to that, if we are looking at funding a project or something new, we can tease out that information in advance to the community, gather feedback to help us come up with a, a better solution, but also just to see if what we want to do is welcomed by the community, if it is something that is a good use of resources and funding. And then if we start to implement a, a change or new project, see how people are reacting to it in real time, and then being able to adjust according to those reactions. Including your packet is the price tag for that, we think it's a, a, a great investment. We've also found money through a different software project that we're not going to move forward with. But I think it's a one-year pilot for this, for us to be able to really engage with our community. I think this is a home run, I think it allows us to have a real opportunity to be more transparent. In the final piece, I failed to mention, is we will be receiving reports from them on certain topics, whether that's quarterly reports or more frequent, which will highlight and address certain projects that we can be presenting to you all, kind of as an update, hey, here's what people are talking about, here are some areas of concern. It allows us to have a, a broader reach. Our comments director, Sean Yonker, I think all of you have been able to meet him, he may add a couple more thoughts or comments on it.
Andy, he addressed some of the things that I have. One thing that I think he didn't mention is that rather than just tracking things that we're already looking for, there's sort of a passive tracking to that as well. They can identify things that are being talked about that maybe we're not looking for, you know, hot topics that aren't on our radar yet. One of the other things is that there's also a, a social media management component that would allow us to post through several of the accounts that it's monitoring, but also, you know, post them at the same time to save us time and more efficiency as well. And I think the, the other aspect that's important is it's, it's not just AI, it's a combination of the know-how that the staff has in implementing that AI, so we can go to them with a very specific request, and they can help us gather the information that we need for that.
Yes, so not only do we have the platform, we also have the team that manages the platform to be able to help tailor it to our specific needs.
And that's all included.
Yeah, I had the chance to, to do a Zoom call, and I immediately was like, wow, this is great. And, and what I liked about it And, and what I liked about it was, we can craft a questionnaire that kind of gets people, what we'll see at the mayor's office is somebody calling up and, you know, just sending us an email, blah, 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 you know, a lot of narrative, where this forces them to, to answer a question, or maybe a five-bullet or a six-bullet, but puts, before they can, before they can comment, so they, it kind of puts them, forces them to answer questions that we need to have answered before they comment. Uh, and I think that helps, and then the team helps us kind of put together the data. Um, but it, you know, people that don't have the, the time or inclination to come downtown will do that, and can do it with regularity on any topic that we roll out, that we want input on, which I think is useful. And I think, experimentally, I would like to think, and we'll see how it looks, but I looked at it like, I immediately thought it was like a Facebook page for municipal engagement, it's like, an opportunity for us to, so it's kind of cool. Maybe it doesn't look that way in reality, but it felt that way in the presentation, so I, I look, look forward to utilizing it.
So, and you, you mentioned mayor's office, would this be directed to, would this be open and useful to all? So how, how is this being used, and how are all departments, or is this just for mayor's office and just for your office?
So, I want to make sure I mention this question correctly. Um, essentially, knowing that our communications division falls within the mayor's office, um, departments, let's say it's transportation, we're thinking about a new project, um, hey, we want to do this survey to hit these questions, hey, we just put in brand-new bike lanes over here, hey, um, what are people thinking about this park, on the rhythm of use? We can mine all that information, um, once we have it. Our comms team being the, the, you know, the quarterbacks of the information, who's managing all of our social media content, they're the ones who would be doing this, but all of that would be available to the teams, including you all, if there's certain areas or conversations, um, whether it's crime, public safety, um, recreation events, um, or infrastructure projects, it can be anything and everything, um, that we think are keywords that we want to explore, and then be very targeted engagement if we have something, a conversation we want to have around a particular topic. Um, we can be forward with that.
I know I myself have two questions before, I know, I know some of my councilmembers may have questions as well. My first question is how, uh, you mentioned about posting to different platforms, forgive me for not knowing the exact name of it, but how is that different from like a Zoot, is that right, where you can like, post to different, and then, and then one second then, also, how does this work in conjunction, or different than the REPT, that we have?
Okay.
Uh, so what, what's the, why, you know, the $26,000 price tag?
So, um, okay, so to address the first part, um, it, that aspect, uh, of it, the social media management piece, would be the same as a Zoot, or something like that, so you're getting that extra benefit of not having to pay for something like that, included, since you're already entering a lot of that information in the system, they went ahead and built it in, which we saw as a pretty valuable tool.
Sure.
The second, uh, being the question about REPT, REPT is more of a, uh, yeah, Q and A, essentially, so, um, residents can ask a question, then we, as the city, um, can respond, uh, with a video message, uh, answering that question. And then those get archived, and then if the question's asked again, people can kind of refer to them, or we can refer them to the questions we already answered. So it, it's, it's a very direct back-and-forth, whereas, um, Zen City is monitoring, um, public sentiment overall that, um, that we aren't directing, I guess, directly responding to.
Sean, thank you for all the updates with the floods and everything else you have your thumb on, I saw all of it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, that was more than a notion. Um, I have a couple questions, uh, when you say $26,000, I have a problem with spending $26,000 if we don't have it, and if it's not totally necessary, and I'm not saying it isn't necessary, so please forgive me. Um, as Mr. Sarbans said when he spoke at our last meeting, there is a large group of taxpayers in our city that do not do social media, and to focus everything on social media is denying them that privilege of participating and giving their input. Uh, if you do decide to do this, because again, this is just an opinion on my part, and that is, if you, I would expect it to be shared very openly, I would like us to see, make use of the TV stations we have here now, have somebody come here and report, have that open communication with the television where we do exist. I mean, if you're, if there's an article about Salisbury on WBOC, I'm stunned, but, um, if, you know, we can do something like that, and maybe, you know, with this, I, I don't know.
Yeah, I, I skipped over that part, I apologize, when I, I kind of glanced through official channels. So typically, what happens, um, in the media is if a newspaper article comes out, or a video comes out from WBOC, they also have a social media component to it, but all of that information is part of this. If, if there's a digital footprint that's within our marketplace, we will be able to gather that information, so, um, a lot of the news articles that may be from the Daily Times pop up on Delmarva Now in a, in a, in a different format, so we have that ability to still engage and get feedback from people who are using, who are reading the newspaper, um, and/or watching the news, so it's not just social media, um, in its entirety.
As a person who used to be a journalist. And, and I think, if, if I'm not mistaken, are you, um, are you talking about the fact that we don't get the coverage from the newspaper that, uh, or the TV stations that, and that's, um, something that we've been encouraging? Um, this, this meeting's open to the, to the media, you know, every, every time.
Well, I'm, I'm wondering, and I won't belabor this, I'm wondering if it wouldn't be advantageous to the city that someone from the city designate, is designated to attend these meetings, and that there is a condition with the TV stations, both of them, that there will be a segment regarding what's happening in the city that will be covered on a regular basis, as opposed to just, well, if we feel like it, or if it's controversial.
We'd love that, um, we were, this topic specifically, we were, um, had a news outlet contact us and wanted to comment in advance of, and it's appropriate to be here, and hear the dynamic conversation, to then be part of that, and then we can comment afterwards, so don't get ahead of it. So there is some people paying attention, they are looking at what we're doing, but I think it goes both ways.
But rather than want, rather than wanting to come, you know, they wanted the information ahead of time, yeah.
Yeah, like, today, I, I did an interview with, uh, WMDT for the zoning hearing tomorrow night, you're right, and I think that, the flipside of it is, you know, like Tony doesn't go to, doesn't like internet, but he also doesn't come to public meetings that much either, you know, so we need a vehicle, in my opinion, for people to be able to tap into, and get broad feedback. I'm hoping it leads to that, that's what I'm hoping, but yeah.
Uh, a couple, a couple things, um, are there any other cities in our region that are even using this? I didn't know if you had a chance to reach out to anybody in, in our region, or even in the state?
There are, I can get a list, I know of at least 300 cities, um, we have a list that they sent over of, of similar-sized municipalities, um, they're an international company, um, I, several thousand clients, but I know we have several in the region, um, nothing on the lower shore, but I think, um, they're, I'd have to get the exact, I don't want to misquote, but yeah, there, there are many people, we've looked at how they engage with their platform, um, we've done some of our due diligence.
There were a couple of, there were a couple of counties, the other side of the bay, there was nothing on this side of the bay.
It looks like here too, looking at their website, that it, you could also, it, it can be on your, it could be, it's an app, also, not only on your laptop, it's an app, and most people do have a, a phone, most people do. Um, so you can also get the app for accessibility.
Yes.
And, and one last comment, um, for due share responsibility, um, knowing that we found money, um, from a program that is no longer needed within, um, another software project, um, and knowing that we are only committed to a single year, we felt pretty comfortable, um, repurposing that funding to a new project, um, and if it doesn't work, and it doesn't do what we need it to do, there's no need to continue spending, um, additional capital investment. We also asked to see if there's an opportunity to do a shorter one during a year, but they said if you want to have a full understanding of an implementation, a year would be the shortest, they typically do three-year pilot, but they allowed us to do a one-year pilot.
Councilman Gregory, I want to make sure I, did you have any questions or?
Um, you asked the question that I was gonna ask, as far as the compatibility with REPT, um, and also just, um, you know, that the funding was coming from something that was already set aside, and was not actually going to be used, um, for another project. The only thing I wanted to know is, will we be getting a full presentation of the capabilities of this? And, and get a little bit more into it before we, you know, when we go, i- if we do move this forward, go into first reading, are we going to get a bigger presentation of it, with some visuals that's, make it a little bit easier for people to understand?
Right, it sounds like you were on a Zoom or something, right, so what, I mean, what?
Absolutely, it, we can go both ways, if it is something that you want to move forward with, before anything is launched, we can have a presentation, the same people who present it to us, if it is a condition of moving it forward, um, they would be happy to do the same thing, we, we're following you.
Now, I'm gonna ask the question, is this a need or a want?
Good, good question. Um, I have known about this company for five years, uh, three years, three years. Um, there, the robustness of this has increased over the years, that makes it more enticing, but having, um, listened to the campaign of the mayor, and some of the people in council, this idea of, we need to improve transparency, we need to improve community engagement, this tool is one that can do that. I, I think if we are interested in gathering additional feedback from people in real-time, and understanding the sentiments of the public, this can achieve that, so, if that is valuable, I would say it's a need. If that's more of a want, because we think we're doing a good enough job, then, then no. We, we don't have it right now, and we're making do, but if we want to improve our, our engagement and communication, um, to just be a bit more informed, I think this is a useful tool.
Okay, I know we do have a public comment, I want to make sure I'm respectful of their time, Lisa Gingrich? Thank you.
Yeah, Lisa Gingrich, 316 North Division Street. Uh, I'm all in favor of a community engagement, uh, project, I think it is somewhat of a need, because all due respect, I don't think we're making do, I think that there's a lot of disengagement, uh, in the community, and, uh, so that's a big question, is how do you get people to engage more? So if this is a way to do it, I don't know how it's gonna be publicized, I don't know how it's gonna be facilitated, but I think it's a good idea to try to get community more involved, outside of a structure such as Facebook, with Facebook rules and regulations, X, you know, rules and regulations, other social media rules and regulations. So I think that that is valuable. Um, one thing I would say is ask for front-end, to use that word that's been used tonight, uh, to find out what people think before you go ahead and start to do things, would be really valuable, assuming we can get the engagement, and what would the level of engagement be? Uh, what level would be deemed a success? 15%, 20%, 30% of the, of the, of the population? Uh, and again, not everybody has internet, not everybody uses internet this way, doesn't even need to be age-related, uh, it's just, it isn't something that some people do. So, you know, how do you, how do you change that habit? Um, and then, uh, what, what's the data gonna be used for? Is there gonna be somebody outside of the city of Salisbury that gets access to any of this data? Whether it's people's personal data, or the results of whatever the city is doing? Uh, where's that data going? Uh, I had the same question on the, uh, the survey that's being done about the comprehensive planning. Um, and then, and then what's, can't read my own handwriting here? Uh, what would be the cost-benefit analysis to decide to do it after one year? That you're saying it's 26, we found some of the funding in something else, okay, fine, isn't that great? Let's do a pilot, at what level would we say that this is worth it, and, and at what price? So that would be something that I would say would need to be very much built into this, and then that takes me right back to, um, doing something, okay, whether it's a want or a need, and I think that it is a need, I think that there is a real need to get more of the community-involved insults, very, a lot of people disengage because they figure it doesn't matter, they don't, they're not listened to, they're not consulted, nothing matters, so why bother? So how do you change that whole dynamic, something like this that shows the seriousness of actually pulling in information, and in a timely way, as opposed to, well, let me explain what we just did, how about, this is what we'd like to do, what's your input on?
Yeah, I mean, I think the journey to greater pr- go ahead.
I want to make sure there's no other, uh, public comment on the, on Zoom.
Lynn?
No, I'm fine.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, it's gonna come in layers, the, the journey to, like, you know, you're talking about, you know, the, the updating the council rules, allowing people to comment immediately following a subject, doing the presentations like Muir did tonight, where there's an open kind of, oh, here's what, here's our process, what's it looks like, I mean, I think that's just gonna come in layers, we're gonna keep doing it better, and I think this, and I'm, I'm not trying to be a big salesman here, but I, I think it would, to me, it struck me, it's like, wow, what an opportunity for anybody, single mom, who's busy, can't go to council meetings, fill out a five-question questionnaire, make a few comments, that becomes part of our input, you know, all over the city, so, to your point, I think it's, he, trying to increase the fan, fan the flames of engagement, so, yeah. Last pitch of the night.
The discussion or?
No, I just, if we adopt it, um, please let, you know, as, as Lisa said, inform people first. I know there were two surveys that have been circulated in the last 24, 48 hours that I had no idea about, and I had comments directed, what is the survey, who put it out, who approved it, et cetera, et cetera. So again, just information, and I stand corrected, Mayor, um, one of my big peeves was communication and transparency, and if this will help address that in big numbers, not just select few, as Lisa mentioned, some of the pieces that would be part of it. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, so the feeling from council?
Well, I, I would go back to, uh, Councilwoman Gregory's suggestion too, is if we move it forward, uh, to be able to have a presentation.
Yeah, so, is that, okay, so that's what, yeah.
I'm good, I'm good with that.
And that's my recommendation as well, I would like the full, it sounds like, you know, we have the mayor's buy-in, but I think he saw the full presentation, and I think this is representative that, again, when we come to council, when we think about council, uh, we want to have the full preview, and I think you did, and I, I think it would be, be nice for us to get the full preview, but also, please think about council when we do this program. I know we mentioned mayor's office, but please think about council, we have a lot of concerns, we hear a lot of feedback as well, and I think, I don't think we have all the resources that mayor's offices has, so, again, I'm gonna say it again, please think about council when, when we do this program, that we were using this to the full capacity, so, given a presentation, I think we can, um, you know, you know, get that presentation in line, I don't know if we're gonna do the Zoom, or, or?
And we can, so, a first reading would be next week, we would then have a work session, and then there'd be a second reading, I could see if they're available at the next work session in February, to do a high-level presentation, to answer some questions. Um, if that would be the direction, I could, I'm pretty sure they would make themselves available.
That sounds good, thank you.
Sounds good, thank you.
I know you didn't say it, but it sounded like you had consensus to move it forward to at least the first reading, is that?
Consensus to, for presentation, correct?
Yes, yes.
For presentation, or, hang on, let's make sure we're getting the, the correct verbiage. Presentation, move it forward, or consensus to move it, move it forward?
Because it would be a first reading next to, what?
No, it'd be, it'd be next.
Next week.
I think it would be, I think it would be best if we go ahead and do the presentation before we have the first reading.
Yes.
I personally would like to see it before I vote on it, so, at least for a first reading, so I, I think that that would be best.
So presentation on, on next work section, work, work session, which is February 5th, and then we'll go from there.
And I'll try to keep it to 15 minutes, presentation, okay?
Great, perfect.
Thank you.
And just to be respectful of Councilman Gregory, and I know we had some more concerns, we're going to move the council rules of order, we have some more, we want to make sure we do a deep dive, so, um, continue working on that, council. Uh, I know you just took the, the mic, but any comments from administration?
Sorry, it's cold in here, um, no, I, I do, uh, just more of an observation, I think we're getting into our stride, I like the way that we are handling our work sessions, I like the dynamic that we are rolling through, so, um, I appreciate it. I, um, it is challenging our team to be more prepared, and to have a more robust conversation, uh, which is good, it, it allows for us to just be more prepared. which is good. It allows for us to just be more prepared and make sure people know that they're being valued. Couple of things that did not fall in deaf ears is that we may need to not only have conversations here, but work to have stronger conversations prior to this with, with the community to get fuller input, to not just make it a three-minute piece, but maybe a larger conversation. So duly noted on, on understanding the need for that.
Thank you.
That's all I got.
Mr. Mayor?
Agreed. I think we're making progress. We're not perfect by any means. We're getting better. And as weeks go on, hopefully we just keep going in the right direction, so.
Yes. Councilwoman Gregory?
Yeah, I just want to, first of all, I want to thank the EMS for their, their care as always in coming out and, and taking care of my son when we needed them. And they were fantastic. They were so quick and professional as always. I just, I can't say enough for our EMS and our fire department. They're just fantastic. The other thing I wanted to bring up was to ask about the apology resolution status. I know we discussed it a while back and had sent it for the attorneys to look at. And something had been drafted up that included the mayor's office. But I believe we were pretty clear in our initial discussion about it that we wanted to keep it as it was, save for a few changes. And I hadn't seen anything else since then, so I just wanted to get a, a status update on that. Council President?
Let me just, or do you have a quick answer to, or?
No, I thought she was referring to me, so go ahead.
Yeah, no, I was, I was asking the council president.
So, well, I guess I'll, I'll interject there. I, I was under the same. I know that the mayor's office was handling that. So that was actually one of my questions tonight, actually, was what was the update from, from mayor's office and, and the attorney?
So Ashley and I have been in communication and we did, she prepared an apology based on the Annapolis version, which I thought I had consensus with. And then they came back with changes. And so it's at this point, if someone is interested in putting together one, you know, based on council recommendation, I don't, I don't think I'm interested in going any farther than the, than the one that was prepared for the Annapolis.
Okay, so it looks like we'll, we'll continue the discussion with council and we may just add that to the agenda to have a formal invite and make sure we move forward with that. And thank you, Councilwoman Gregory.
Yes, thanks.
Thank you. Councilwoman DeChio?
I'd like to thank our diligent and just wonderful people that were taking care of getting all the trash picked up. I mean, that was more than a notion. It came to fruition. I talked to my guy out front and he said, we're working. I said, no, we all appreciate it. And again, thank you, Sean, for all the, you know, preliminary. Those are things, when you have the information, you totally bring down the anxiety level for people. One other thing, thank you, Mr. Kistrov, for acknowledging the fact that there is a need for input from everybody, especially on this one topic we were talking about tonight, one that I asked that Middle Boulevard be brought up and discussed and addressed. And I thank you for putting that on the agenda. And I thank those of you for coming to participate in the discussion.
Councilwoman Jackson?
Well, I'm kind of ditto with Michelle. I know you said we will handle this at another date. But as I said before, with this apology resolution proclamation, I'm kind of perturbed about it simply because, as I said then, that night, it's going to be pushed back and pushed back and pushed back. And that's what has happened to this. It has been pushed back, backwards, instead of it coming forward. What we have to realize, this didn't happen here. We're not asking for us to give personal apologies because we weren't involved, but we need to let this go. I'm talking about Annapolis. What happened in Annapolis didn't happen in Salisbury. Salisbury had their own defeat with this. So how can we go by a resolution that happened in Annapolis when this is not Annapolis? This is Salisbury. And this is just how I feel. So we need to come forward and we need to do what is right by the people who and the persons and the descendants of those men who were lynched. We need to come forward and do what is right. I don't know why this is so hard. And I, I, I feel this way and I will probably always feel this way until it's done. I mean, we shouldn't be putting things, pushing things backwards. We should be moving things, let me finish what I'm going to say, Mayor. I think things should be put in place. It's been how long since we had this conversation? November? October, November?
Well, it's been going on for longer than that.
Well, it's been longer than that, but since the last conversation we had in reference to this proclamation, we asked there to be a proclamation. And then it was told to us by Mr. Robert Taylor that he, or someone found a resolution from Annapolis. You can't compare Annapolis to Salisbury. And that's the way I feel. And, and I think that the resolution, that the actual resolution that was brought to us was very suffice. And if the, if the attorney, our city attorney has gone through there and done some of her little corrections before she has done them, and we were, I was all right with it. I don't know about anybody else, but I was fine with that. But to, to prolong this any longer, I think is, is becoming a little bit much.
Well, just so you're aware, I, I had an exchange with James and I got buy-in from him that the apology from Annapolis was sufficient. So I was operating on that basis when I had actually prepared it. As it relates, I've been mayor for eight weeks. This is how she's been bumping around for eight months. So, you know, I, I responded to it as quickly as I possibly could and gave what I was an honest presentation of what he acknowledged he would accept. And then he didn't. So what I'm saying as the mayor is that, if you're welcome to, crap, we didn't prepare the Annapolis apology. We obviously reflected the facts of the Salisbury case, which were not dissimilar in terms of. But I guess what I'm saying is that we made an honest forthcoming effort to meet the apology expectations and we weren't able to get together. What I'm saying is if you have a, I just want to make sure that the city is not exposing themselves legally. And that's where I'm going to draw the line on that subject. But at the end of the day, I don't mind an apology. And I said that during the campaign up until three months ago. So I don't, I'm just saying, let's just do it in a way that's crafted appropriately, accomplishes the goal, but doesn't open the city unneeded litigation, in my opinion.
So what is the next, I mean, what is the, I guess since now we're discussing it, what is the?
All right. So it's procedural, go ahead.
Yeah, I do think that we should have this discussion at the next work session. I know, Councilwoman Jackson, that you're reluctant to kind of push it forward, but so that we're not in violation of any Open Meetings Act, it's not on the agenda tonight. I don't think we should have any substantive discussion. I think it's obvious that there needs to be discussion on this. There should be on the next work session agenda.
And so just again, as the, the comment was made, to make sure that department heads and administration is well-prepared, again, from mayor's office to council, if you know there are issues going on, if you've heard murmurs, then please let council know because we're getting the, the questions as well. But we don't know what happens from the interim to the last time that you've spoken with parties. But, you know, I didn't know from the last, I think that was before Christmas when we decided that, that we were okay with the language. And then, and I'm going to keep it very general, that we were okay with language. And then the ball was back in that court. So then when, when we hear from three different sources, hey, what's going on with this? I say, the last I know, so that's just, again, the feedback has to be, because, because I know you're, you know, we're equally as busy, but, you know, we just have to, that's all work together. So I'll leave it at that. Councilwoman, Council Vice President Blake?
I would like to have, definitely thank the sanitation department.
Yes.
Definitely thank them. And appreciate that. And all the updates, especially with the storms and stuff, was very nice too. Thank you very much. I wanted to, in regards to something that was on the agenda, but we're going to wait until we're all together, I would like the council to make sure that they really review and go through the, the rules of order and code of conduct discussion that's included in the packet. And email any of your suggestions or corrections or updates to the city clerk's office. In the packet, there's like some things that are presented. And I don't know if there's a total clean copy, but some of the language has to be, you know, updated. The address has to be updated, or something. So before we approve those things, any corrections or suggestions, please email them to the city clerk, either Ms. Kim Nichols or Julie English. And January is National Blood Donation Month. So, and of course, the eastern shore is very critical. Please, please donate blood, plasma, red blood cells. If you're not an organ donor, please consider that. You never know when you or a family member may need, be in need of these items. So please consider donating blood. Thank you.
Thank you all. And again, I echo a lot of the sentiments made about the public comments and intervention, the work from our different departments. We thank you all. And our sanitation departments also thank the town of Berlin for extending their vehicle and their, their people. So we appreciate our neighbors to the west. We also acknowledge that yesterday was Martin Luther King Jr. Day. I hope everyone did some volunteerism or some service. You know, we acknowledge and, you know, remember a wonderful man who has changed the course of history. So we acknowledge that. Just one, one event.
I forgot to mention, you did a good job. You did a good job. I forgot to mention that.
Thank you, thank you. One event at the end of this month, on January's 29th, Junior Achievement is having a community open house from four to six. I know they're pushing that. It's a wonderful event out there. As well as they have their gala this Saturday. So I'm excited to wear one of my tuxedos. Yes. So if you want to see me in that, come visit and a donation to a worthy cause. Ah, you got to come see it. You got to. Yes. And with that, this work session is adjourned. And I do call our special meeting to order. Yeah, I need to make sure everyone is settled. All right, could I have a motion to adopt the special meeting agenda?
So moved. Second.
All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 And the chair votes aye. All right. Could I have a motion in a second to approve ordinance number 2848 for second reading?
So moved. Second.
Ordinance number 2848, this is in accordance of the city of Salisbury authorizing the mayor to accept the grant from the Walmart Foundation and to appropriate those funds for Ann Street Village. As you mentioned, this is before you for second reading. There have been no changes or amendments.
All those in favor of approving ordinance number 2848 for second reading, please signify by saying aye.
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 And the chair votes aye. Could I have a motion in a second to approve ordinance number 2849 for second reading?
So moved. Second.
Ordinance number 2849, in accordance of the city of Salisbury to accept grant funds from the Community Foundation of the Eastern Shore in the amount of $7,231 for the Summer Youth Employment Program. This is before you, also for second reading. No changes or amendments.
All those in favor approving ordinance number 2849 for second reading, please signify by saying aye.
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 And the chair votes aye. Could I have a motion in a second to approve ordinance number 2850 for second reading?
So moved. Second.
Ordinance number 2850, in accordance of the city of Salisbury approving a budget amendment of the FY 2024 general fund budget to appropriate funds to the Salisbury Fire Department's operating account. Again, this is before you for second reading. No changes or amendments.
All those in favor of approving ordinance number 2850 for second reading, please signify by saying aye.
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 And the chair votes aye. Could I have a motion in a second to approve ordinance number 2851 for second reading?
So moved. Second.
Ordinance number 2851, in accordance of the city of Salisbury approving a budget amendment of the FY 2024 general fund budget to appropriate funds to the Salisbury Fire Department's operating account. This is also before you for second reading. No changes or amendments.
All those in favor of approving ordinance number 2851 for second reading, please signify by saying aye.
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 And the chair votes aye. Could I have a motion in a second to approve ordinance number 2852 for second reading?
So moved. Second.
Ordinance number 2852, in accordance of the city of Salisbury approving a budget amendment of the city's special revenue fund budget and to accept and appropriate donated funds from the Bless Our Children Campaign for the SANA's workshop program. The last one tonight is also before you for second reading. No changes or amendments.
All those in favor of approving ordinance number 2852 for second reading, please signify by saying aye.
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 And the chair votes aye. And this meeting is now adjourned.